I think I'm a little downhill. I can slide real good this way. I'm not trying to be fresh, I promise you.
It says it's on there.
A little rolly-colly that way.
Being 5:30, I'll now call to order the regular meeting of Lake Placid Town Council this fourteenth day of November 2022 in the Government Center at the town of Lake Placid, Florida. I'd ask everyone to please make sure your phones are either off or on vibrate. If we're wearing covers, I'd ask you to take them off, which you're not, so thank you for that. And if everybody would please rise, I'll ask our police chief to lead us in an invocation and the pledge.
Well, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've gathered us in the most beautiful city of all this county to do your work, come and govern, and we pray, Lord, that we do it with goodwill towards each other and all decisions made for the greater good of this community. We praise you for your son. We thank you for all things unbelieved, we bring it to you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. To the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll go into Consent Agenda One, A through F.
Mayor, you want to do roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it'd be nice if you knew everybody was here, wouldn't it? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Holbrook?
Here.
Councilmember Royce?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Sapp?
Here.
Councilmember Hayes?
Here.
Okay, now we'll go into Consent Agenda One, which is A through F.
I'll make a motion to approve Consent Agenda One, A through F.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the podium? Seeing none, we'll take it to the audience. Hearing none, we'll bring it back. Call the council.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go to Consent Agenda Two, and the only one on there is the duly authorized monthly bills of Royce Supply.
I'll make a motion, we approve Consent Agenda Two, Item A, Bills to Royce Supply.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any comments from the podium? Hearing none, take it to the audience. Seeing none, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Abstain, that business belongs to a family member. I have filed the proper paperwork with a clerk.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Thank you. I do have one citizen's request to speak, and we'll go ahead and take care of that right now. Is it Jody or Judy? Judy, would you like to come up to the podium?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Judy Welker, and I am here because they were discussing possibly doing some renovations on the Lake June Ballpark Field off Lake June. I have been a resident of Lake Placid for 21 years and love the lakes, brought up my kids here, and a couple of years ago I became a rowing coach. Now, it's not regular rowing, it's Olympic-sized rowing. I have to drive 110 miles to row, and I actually had to do that in order to teach and help kids get college scholarships. And then I realized, we have it all in our own backyard. I'm a member of U.S. Rowing, as well as the Florida State Rowing Association, and just recently I met a girl named Casey Gringas, who started with Polk County and officially put their rowing club to its first start two weeks ago. The benefit of rowing for this community will be fabulous. It'll offer everything from college scholarships for kids. If they start in middle school through high school, by the time they end high school, women have six out of 10 chance of getting an actual college scholarship for rowing. For boys, five out of 10. Five out of 10. Besides that, the ballet of it, the physical fitness of it, it's the hardest sport I have ever done, and it's the most wonderful sport because it works everything with no impact, which basically means we work from your little toe to that brain of yours in order to stay in sync and teach everybody something. It's called work together and as a team. I also believe that we have many opportunities to bring other groups of rowing in to have races against, which will also bring additional tourism into our town. And I have to say, it is the most eloquent, hard sport, and it's an Olympic sport, and I think it would do wonderful on our map in our town. And I hope you look at giving me a 20 by 80 space on the Lake June Ball Field Park. Now, here's the catch, I'm going to ask for something close to waterfront. And my reason for that is because our eight sweepboat is going to weigh about 320 pounds, and it is exactly 60 feet long. If I get high school students that have to do a half-mile trek with this thing on top of their head, I'll never have the opportunity to give one a college scholarship, and I'll never make it on the water. There is a spot, I did look at it, I would be replacing a small little swing set that is there by the water to the left of the swimming area. It actually, I mapped it out, it would fit a 20 by 80 spot. That 20 by 80 spot would hold four boats, of which are on hold for me right now, if I can get the approval from the town. The four boats are two eights and two fours. What I plan to bring with that is negotiate as an afternoon school program, because none of this is funded in the education in the state of Florida. But meanwhile, it'll grant you the best scholarship for your children. The other hand out of it is it'll keep us older people in great physical fitness, and it'll be a benefit that way all the way around. If we grow, you never know what it could offer, but it needs the opportunity. I'm not a quitter, I've been here for 21 years. Fifteen years ago, I said when I had about 11 kids inside my house, I should open a rowing club so I can get you all out of here. Well, 15 years later, I'm ready to do it for the other ones, and I hope you give me the opportunity to prove you right and make this a good benefit for our town. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I've spoken with Judy about this potential project on several occasions, and I know she's looked at both our facilities and Bishop Park, and if I'm wrong, correct me, but I think you indicated that there really is not an appropriate location at Bishop Park. Is that accurate?
Yeah, there isn't.
Okay.
You have the buildings on the different sides there that are just not going to offer that space. Really, there are only two spots at the ballpark that were really enticing to me when it comes to at least being able to be tucked away, but one of them isn't. You have a little circle in the middle with a median, and then there's a dirt road where people go through on that side. I would take that center circle if I could around the road. All I need to do is put up a 10-foot fencing around it and a bunch of boat racks inside. It's not going to be obtrusive-looking by any means, but if we did put it to the far corner where that swing set is, we really have easy access to get out, and I'm really not in the way of anything.
And so my perception, Mr. Mayor, is if other council members have an interest, a potential interest, would be to have her work with Harry and Phil and, you know, more formally say this would be the spot and come back and understand from the town's perspective, does it create a problem? And my understanding, while she's always said, "I would love to have some money," she's not actually looking from us for anything other than a location in her, she or her organization would do all the work, absorb all the costs, we would just be providing dirt for that to sit on.
Yes, it would be a 503, not-for-profit, okay? So...
Well, are you looking to buy the property, lease the property, or just have us let you use the property?
Bingo. I'll pick door number three on that one.
Well, yeah, then we'd have to ask the question about insurance.
And I would have all the insurances that would be necessary in order to do so.
Probably would have to do is go through the attorney and...
I just think, Mr. Mayor, it's probably premature for us to go into too many details, and I know Judy said she's found the spot, and that's, she's now told, I did not know that when we last spoke a week or two ago, but I would just encourage either Harry or Phil or a couple of people to get with her and say, "This is the spot," and map it, and there may be reasons why it's a bad idea from our perspective, but I think she'd ask a couple of times, "What should I do," or "What's the next step?" And I think she just wanted to come by and make us aware that she would like to pursue something. Is that accurate?
Yes, and that I've had a lot of participation from people in the town that are interested in seeing it. I know when I row, people are interested in seeing me go by, it's not usual, so, but the long run out of this is, it is just a healthy benefit for everyone, and I think it'll bring just more of a benefit to the town as well, more tourism, as well as another sport. Face it, we have all these lakes. What have we got going on for the people? This is the first, and it's Olympic sport. We might get an Olympian. I'll be damned if I don't try to.
So I would just ask...
Personally, I think it's a great idea if we can, if we can work it out, and if the council agrees, and we can, you know, get something started for you, I think it's a great idea.
Great.
So if it's okay, I would just suggest we ask Harry and/or Phil to get with her and get all the details, and Harry, if you haven't met Judy, would you wave at Judy, so she knows who to talk to? Okay.
And I spoke to her and told her that it needed to go before council, and I think that maybe she didn't understand my idea of coming before council would include diagrams up on the board to show you what it's going to do, and so she came before council, so we didn't get that in depth.
That's a start.
I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Yes.
So you need this 20 by 80 space to store the boats, and this is going to handle four boats?
Four boats.
Two eight footers and two fours?
Two eights and two fours. Two 60-foot eight sweepboats and two four sweepboats. A sweepboat is only one oar per person, sculling is two. We're not going to start that way, we're going to work with one and graduate eventually.
So, and these would be stored in a tent?
Actually, it would have to be in a gated area, so there would have to be a chain-link fence gate that would be put up with a gate access in order to get in and out. Along with that, I would need a small shed, which I already have to put inside for, two separate ones actually, for gas cans, because I will need to put a boat, a launch boat, in to coach. You just don't get in a rowboat of that magnitude and think you're going to row. It doesn't happen, it takes time and lessons. So it would all be a learn-to-row program, and it would start that way. But yes, I would need a place to store two gasoline tanks, which is separate, and then a shed that would take care of the slings, and an oar rack, and some equipment.
The shed would be where the boats would be stored?
It would be inside the gated spot, yep. And all it needs is to have a combination lock on it, if you ever needed to get into it, you for sure could. That's not a fear of mine of any, but I just, having that type of equipment, I mean, an average new eight sweepboat costs between $80,000 and $90,000. So just oar alone, or anywhere between $200 to $500 for a set of oars. We're talking equipment here that's valuable and just needs to be understood, and being fenced would be the safest way for everybody.
Of course, and also, did you happen to look up to see if there's lighting available? Because you would need light, you would need light over that, over that area.
Actually, I've worked with Cape Coral rowing for the last couple of years, and until our building boom after the pandemic, we were over there, and we had no electricity, we did everything by solar, so we'd have some sort of solar ignition.
I don't care if it's solar or electrical, but you need light.
Yeah, it would, yeah, but I don't really think we could do with anything else. I mean, the last rowboat will come in at just after dark.
Not my point, for safety, for security, so your boats don't get stolen, so your oars don't get stolen, you don't just throw a lock on it, you throw a nice lock on it that has...
And a safety link, yeah. I can definitely do that.
A bolt cutter resistant lock, and you need light for safety, please.
Okay.
Okay, and then I guess what we need to do is have you get with Harry and Phil, work out all the particulars, and then let them come back to us.
Wonderful, I thank you for my time, I really appreciate your time.
And good luck with it.
And I'm glad I got through this.
Works out, good luck with it.
Thank you.
All right. Now go to public hearings. This is under second reading, Ordinance 2022-12, Annexation of the Placid Advent Hospital. I don't see a...
Keep going, keep going.
It's way down.
It's on page 56, Mayor.
Page what?
56th actual ordinance.
Oh, there it is, yeah, it was way down. Ordinance number 2022-12, An Ordnance of the Town of Lake Placid Providing for the Annexation, comma, under Section 171.044, comma, Florida statutes, comma, of lands contiguous to the town of Lake Placid, comma, Florida, comma, owned by Adventist Health System/Somebout, comma, Incorporated, semicolon, providing for an effective date, period. This is on second reading. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve and adopt on second hearing, Ordinance 2022-12.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments from the podium? Hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. All right, seeing none, bring it back, poll the council, please.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we go to 4B, second reading, Ordinance number 2022-16, Compton Property. There it is. An ordinance of the Lake Placid Town Council authorizing the conveyance of town property to Salem Medical Team LLC, semicolon, and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve and adopt on second hearing, Ordinance number 2022-16.
Second.
Okay. What's next? What do we got next?
Vote.
Vote.
5C1?
We need to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. We have, we had our motion and a second. Any other comments from the podium? Hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. Seeing none, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Okay, next is 5C1, Purchase of Green Dragon Lift, Green Dragon Drive Lift Station Site.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
Joe and I have worked together on the identification, location, sizing, and negotiation of the purchase of a site for a rather significant lift station. This will be the one where the conference center line comes in through Serena, the subdivision, and then dead ends in, not dead end, but terminates into the existing Lake Pla, Green Dragon Drive Lift Station, it's the very south end, but it needs to be a much larger lift station. All of Joe's hockey from basically Lake Country Elementary, south, the County Road 29 plant we have will ultimately come up that hill, down the road, up 27, over Lake Mirror Drive, up East Lake with the conference center, and then into our plant. So we have negotiated with the Smokes, the agenda package will have the brief explanation, the survey, an excerpt of the survey, large enough that you could read it so you don't see the whole page, as well as the proposed contracts that the Smokes have agreed to. Joe? Did I miss anything? So we would encourage you to authorize the contract and direct the clerk to bring a budget amendment to fund it.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to authorize Mayor Holbrook to enter and close the attached contract to purchase the three parcels of land on the south end of Green Dragon Drive at Marquada, and direct the clerk to amend the town utility budget to utilize funds in the Lake Placid Regional Utility Account to fund the purchase.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the podium? Okay, hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. Seeing none, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Very good. Next is 5C2, Purchase of a 30-foot utility and path right-of-way. And this is going from West Interlake down Tangerine to the ball fields, is that correct?
Yes, this is intended to link the school and the ball field all the way down to Lake June Park, as well as from Tangerine, that's down the west side of Tangerine, and then would be a similar 30-foot easement, not easement, right-of-way that we would own, parcel of land, if you will, out to Lake June Point. This would be used for dual use, both for our utility paths, water and sewer, over time, some is needed right now, other is not, as well as a location for our pathways. Recall, we have a grant, or the county has a grant, to construct a multi-use path out West Interlake. We've had a good bit of debate about where that path goes, so this will hopefully answer that question. Would be able to, with 30 feet, put an eight or 10-foot path down with streetlights and landscaping. It would also loop behind that one out parcel that Buddy Rogers used to own, it's someone else now, and we'd go around behind that one, so you would link or connect the two paths without ever having to get out in the road. Sooner or later, you're going to have to cross West Interlake to get the high school, across the street, I don't see how, a way to get around that if they're going down to Lake June Park. There you go. It's at the rate of 60 grand an acre, it's little over three acres, I, it's around three acres, the math is in there, and you have a proposed contract, and my recommended motion is to authorize the mayor to enter the contract and ask the clerk to take the money out of the regional utility. Period. I'm in the budget to do that.
And that goes all the way down Tangerine to the ball fields, right?
It does.
How far west on Interlake does it go?
All the way out to Lake June Point.
It goes all the way out to Lake June Point, okay.
And it would be on the north side of the road, because that's one owner, the Smokes family.
Right, right.
The one on the south would run into a lot of driveways.
All those other, yeah, all those locks, yep, okay.
I'll make the motion to move that the town council authorize Mayor Holbrook to enter into the, close and attach contract to purchase 30-foot wide corridor west side of Tangerine and north side of West Interlake, and direct the clerk to amend the town utility budget to use the funds in Lake Placid Regional Utility Account to fund the purchase.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments from the podium? Hearing none, I'll take it.
I think it's my obligation as the town engineer, and I'll let Kevin speak up as well, just to let you guys kind of know what we have slated coming out of our capital improvement budget, which is where I believe these funds would come from. If you would like to know that, I can tell you now, we have a quick synopsis, because we're talking about spending about $175,000 out of our capital improvement budget. You guys want to hear the synopsis? Okay, right now, and Kevin, interject when I misspeak, but right now we're sitting at about 1.2 million current balance in the capital improvement budget. I'm guessing the Interlake Pipe Bursting Project, as soon as we can get that reviewed and they approve the plans and specs, we'll be going out to bid for that one. I've just penciled in an overage of 200,000 here, that's a guess, I don't know. That would also, we could use ARPA funds for that, so I think this is a little bit of a bigger conversation, that could have some alternate funding as well. The waterline extension, we have already told the engineers to go ahead with that design, the waterline extension that would be part of the sewer project. Everybody remember, we were going to design that, just not necessarily build it. That was another 200,000 or so. Kevin has programmed in his budget $50,000 for cell phone meters, and the highway park generator died during Nicole, so that's about another 90,000. That's just the, what we've committed and what we really have to do. That leaves us with an ending balance of about 667,000 in the capital improvement account. With the addition of this, you know, that would knock it down another 150, 175,000.
Yeah.
Leave us with, I'm just using rough numbers, half a million. So that's kind of what we already have committed, so those are some big chunks out of our capital improvement account, and I think it's my obligation just to let you guys know where that stands.
Thank you.
All right, Aaron, any other comments from the audience? All right, we'll bring it back to council, there's probably, there's got to be some other places we can, we'll have to get with Rachel, find out, there's probably some other places we can generate some funds also. Or does it have to come from that?
You could use funds in town general revenue, and, but you'd have to amend the budget.
Right.
And if you do that, I would encourage it to be done as a loan in the utility.
Do it as a loan.
But right now, with 600,000, and you still may get the 200 paid, if in fact you overshoot and don't get the grant extended, so I don't know that you need to borrow, you can borrow later.
If we have to.
If you have to.
At this point, we don't have to, so...
I'm just thinking that capital improvement funds are in there for capital improvements, and they're meant to be spent for that, not just to sit in the budget.
That's true.
So as long as we are not bringing ourselves to a level down past which we're not comfortable, I would have no heartburn with using that, and it seems like a half a million dollars would still left in the budget after all of this, seems like it, it would allow me to sleep at night, I don't know about you all.
Okay, all right, let's bring it back to council, poll the council, please.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Okay. Next is 5C3, FDOT Improvements, U.S. Highway 27, Tomoka.
Councilman Royce and I have been working with some of the landowners in north of town on the industrial park. Councilman Royce has been dealing with the readiness, I don't know whether you're ready to talk about how they went, but... to talk about how they went, but this intersection at the hospital, we found out a few months ago, is to be reconfigured in two years. They're doing the design, if it's not already done, the bidding, and it will, it appears to be making it more expensive and difficult to use the hospital intersection as access to the industrial park. Today, the access to the industrial park is up. What used to be Cemetery Road is now St. John's, and DOT, as well as the county, as well as the town, has said, you know, that's a really bad intersection to use. So we've been trying to say, yeah, let's make the one just north of it more user-friendly, and they're doing the exact opposite. It isn't wasted on me that, as you drive between here and Sebring, it looks as though they closed several median crossovers and opened some that go nowhere except to maybe a cow pasture, and still paved an apron into that cow pasture. There's not even a road to be served, which is what we were suggesting they consider doing here, so then whatever landowner or in that area wanted to build a road, it would be easy to connect into 27. This resolution is intended to get that conversation started between the town and DOT. The secretary, district secretary has indicated he certainly wants to pay attention to communities, I believe. County engineer has had good input on this, I don't think the town necessarily has. Joe, if I'm out of line saying that, now would be a good time to stand up and say, I missed something. Brother Royce?
Yeah, I, I think that this is something we want to do for a plethora of reasons, and we definitely need to get, we need to lay a marker down with FDOT that when they, you know, they've basically improved US 27 everywhere in Highlands County except for this small little gap that starts about a mile north of our town limits and runs through town. They'll be working on intersection improvements after they finish the work they're doing now, and then in the next several years, they will get to the area that's basically from here to where they're leaving off now. So this, this puts them on notice that as they are doing their planning, they should plan for, if not a signalized intersection at the hospital, which is also expanding. The hospital itself is going to expand, correct, Mr. Harris?
We've been told.
That's what we, that's our understanding anyways, right. But that they should construct a, on the southbound lane, a left turn lane. So whether it's the Davis property going, becoming commercial lots, whether it's a potential development east and north of here, whether it is a industrial park, everyone says that St. John's intersection is bad news, and we need, we need to line this up with Tomoka Boulevard. So this is, this is really nothing more than saying, okay, they, and they said to us during joint meetings here, FDOT, get us some stuff in writing, get some stuff from the hospital, I think the hospital is preparing a letter, so we just don't want to take that official position. While we're talking about it, I will tell you that I did participate. Duke Energy, we, we had asked, and Duke Energy, working with Highlands County Economic Development Commission, they did a site readiness study for the properties that are to our north and east. Some of the property we actually own, some of it, a lot of the Pauls own, some other owners, and it got very, very good marks. I will tell you, really, the only, the concern that the firm, the consultants have was a lack of natural gas, and so we are, have folks looking into the programs available, grant programs available to get natural gas from 27, I mean, from 70 up here. There may be a partner, and none of this is going to cost the town any money, but they may have a partner to, south of 70, to help pay for the tap, and so with the rail siding potential out there, they felt, the Duke folks felt like we had a site that stacked up pretty well for potential development. Now, we're still a ways away from that, but it was critical to that, that we also had the right intersection and right-of-way that came across the Davis property. So I would definitely think we need to send FDOT a letter telling them to please take it into account in their plan, so.
All right, for the record, I'll go ahead and read it in. Resolution of the Lake Placid Town Council regarding improvements in United States Highway 27 at Tomoka Boulevard.
And I was recommending a resolution rather than a, a letter, simply because I think it makes more of a statement to the department, this is the entire government saying, this is what we think you need to do.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 22, 2022-17.
A second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any comments from the podium? Hearing none, we'll take it the audience. Saying none, bring them back, poll the council.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
All right, we'll go to 5C4, Fifth Agreement with the District Advisory Board of the Southern District regarding the provision of the town utilities to Lake Placid Camp and Conference Center.
This agreement does two things, you'll notice the agreement has been executed by the Camp and Conference Center, the district board. Is the executed agreement in the package, Phil? We have it regardless. There were two issues that came up. One was from the State of Florida Department of Environmental Protection, using, with the SRF loan, they wanted us to amend and tie the Camp and Conference Center words, which I use and their lawyer uses routinely to describe the property, to the property described in the agreement on Schedule A. So we did that. We also, Ray had asked last time to confirm that the Camp and Conference Center is obligated to go forward on the waterline extension. I had asked for time to review, as you can see, there were four agreements at the time. This will make number five. The second issue we address in this one is to say that the deposit, they, not deposit, the payment they've made toward the system development charge on both water and sewer become non-refundable. So that makes the agreement a little more enforceable. They have said they will more than once. That always begs the question, what if they don't? So that was my attempt to enforce, and they agreed without debate kindly, thank you. So I would encourage adoption of the fifth agreement between the board and the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion, we adopt the fifth agreement. And in support of my motion, I want to say that, to his credit, Dr. Wilson, when I raised a question a month ago, he, I think that very evening, had texted me, assured, wanted to assure us that they had every intention, and I think they've been very good partners through this long ordeal, and I appreciate it, I just wanted to make sure that we, you know, in their vernacular, we are all singing from the same hymnal as we move forward through this process, so thank you very much, Dr. Wilson.
Second, I'll second that, Ray.
All right, got a motion and a second, any other comments from the podium? Take it the audience. Bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right, next is 5D1, Lake June Park Projects Updates. Mr. Mayor, the, I don't know how in-depth council wants to get over this particular agenda item, and the chamber has been waiting for their turn to be last, if you're in a hurry. Okay, okay, she's, she's patient. Okay, council made a motion to put Lake June Phase Two, and I got a briefing here in the minutes of the Phase Two, but there was a lot of discussion that council has concerns, and as usual, I try to address a little bit of all of them. So, but I put it in as council made the motion to do, and that is before the ARPA this coming Thursday. It can be pulled if council wants to pull it. And we met with Polston Engineering, and Councilman Wilson was concerned, was real interested in pickleball courts, and also Councilman Sapp expressed it, which I agree that we could get as much better use out of it without all the retention pond than just leaving it like it is. And, and that is an option. So one of the things that we, that I met, met with Polston on was, what if we redesign it and take some of this stuff out that we were going to do Phase Three? Maybe include a pickleball court in here? And could we do some of the retention pond? All of this changes, I guess what I'm asking council for sure, if you want to go ahead with, with the ARPA as committed, or maybe sit back and wait until the next ARPA meeting, three months from now, and see if we can't come to a consensus as to what you'd like to see down there, since it doesn't appear that what's actually submitted is not, not...
I think we don't have a choice, I think we need to wait. There's no sense in continuing if we're kind of in disarray right now, anyway. Come up with a better plan and present them with something different at the next round.
And, and that's fine, it just, it didn't make any sense to put a project that we know is going to change by $10,000 right out of the chute with the engineering, so. And, and in the meanwhile, council can discuss this, I don't know how y'all want to do it, you know, kind of figure out what you want, the pickleball courts is something you're interested in. There appears to be one game in, in town, although it would, of course, go out for bid, but Nighty Sports apparently give us a quote on the, on the pickleball courts, as, as I was requested to get. Also got a request on lighting. I'm not sure whether the Nighty Sports request includes lighting and, and light, and the pickleball courts, but it, it's, from what I'm finding out, is pickleball courts is not something you just throw up a batch of concrete and paint lines on and put up a post, make a pickleball court out of it. Apparently, there's some specialty in...
It's similar to tennis courts, and it's the exact same material, just different dimensions, different lines and everything, but it's built to the same specifications a tennis court would be built to, from my, from my knowledge. I have a question on this other retention and everything, was, I mean, the bid itself you, you got from Nighty Sports, you're not sure if the lighting was included in there, because that seems like awfully high range that they...
With lighting?
Yeah, with the lighting. So we need to clarify that, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, we will, and the best clarification is, it has to go out for bid anyway.
Right.
And, and if, if we're, if I can get clear, you know, some direction from council, that's the way you want to go with a pickleball court and maybe get, I've downloaded probably 15 or so...
Well, the specs that I saw you use there is, is similar, it's similar to Sun and Lakes and, and Sebring, there's, they have the similar setup there. I don't think you'd need any additional parking, you know, depending on where you located it, you know, maybe a sidewalk from there to the restrooms or something, but I, I don't think it would require anything beyond that, other than the courts and, and lighting, we've got restrooms there and stuff, but the price did come in a little higher than I thought.
Just depends on what you want.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to see it move forward, and if we had to scale the number of courts back, if it made a significant difference, but, you know, getting some harder numbers myself.
And of course, council knows, y'all can do what you want to do, but I mean, you could totally abandon the Phase One right now, or what, those phases altogether, and just put in a pickleball court.
Well, by doing, continuing with those phases, we kind of pigeonhole ourselves. Once we start down that path, we kind of have to stay with that, once you get it tied up with asphalt on the ground. Back to our waiting 90 days until the next round.
So you could just go straight to the pickleball court, if that's what y'all decided to do, and, and, I mean, you know, once you started talking, and I estimated for eight courts around 14,000 with a little Google map and all, so, I mean, you're talking a footprint now of all that asphalt plus, because it, so it has to, the engineers have to plan accordingly for the retention, so. And to support Charlie, I, I don't want to see us cut back on the courts. I don't, what's the minimum you need to have tournaments?
From what I've been told, is eight courts minimum. There is not one public, well, Charlie Brown Park is going to have six there, but there are no public courts in this county, none.
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to do it, I'd, I'd like to see us do it the right way to where we could have tournaments, it's going to bring people into town.
Well, it just, there's a lot of people that...
And there's a lot of people that would use it anyways.
And it's not just old people, I, I played some very good young men, 23-years-old, that...
And I, I see now there's, I see now there's a show on TV.
Yeah, but it, I mean, it, and it, this would be open to the public.
Yeah.
Just on the groups that I'm on, involved in, in pickleball, that play at the Genesis Center and other places, there's over 200 people in the greater Lake Placid area that I know that play.
Wow.
Seriously, and play regularly, and that's not count, that's not counting winter people.
Do they charge for that, Charlie, or is that just free?
At the Genesis Center?
Or in any of the places, the public?
Sun and Lakes is membership only. You have to pay, and it's a higher rate for non-residents of Sun and Lake. Then they got Sun and Lake South, which aren't really, they're tennis courts with paint on them, but those aren't true pickleball courts, but they have, I, I've never even played down there, because they generally, I don't think it's got lights, but I think there's, I believe there's three, and they may have kind of worked in taping out another one for courts. And that again is, I think there's a membership component to that, which is not a big deal, but, you know, it's, it's always full, especially this time of year.
So if we build these eight pickleball courts, then, and, and they're public access courts, but do they have to pay the town a membership fee or whatever in order to play there, and if so, how are we going to monitor that?
I mean, a user fee, I don't think, you know, something nominal that'll offset the cost of the lights, which is really going to be, and, because the maintenance is going to be negligible, I would believe.
Right, I think the lights is the biggest deal.
But, you know, a nominal user fee, annual, or, you know...
Just like we do with other recreation of that facility.
We do with the ball clubs, yeah.
And that could all be worked out.
If I might, Mr. Mayor, to Phil's question now, I think it's appropriate that we just, we hold off, and I would encourage our representatives to, to go to the meeting and say the reason we're pulling the request is because, and I understand, nothing's ours, but I think we need to verbalize that we have what we feel is a more appropriate use of the facility that we will be making a request for, you know, three months out. In, in the meeting with Polston, I think if we don't do all the paving we had done before, then it cuts back on the retention, we're probably going to have to add just a couple of parking places, like another handicap spot, those kinds of things, but we're just going to have to spend a few dollars with Polston to kind of redraw this a little bit and figure out, okay, where, I think we know where we want the pickleball courts, is there an area where we can have some boat trailer parking? But at least, my impression that we all agreed on at the last meeting was, we didn't want to have all the parking and all the retention between the pavilions and the beach, we wanted that to be a more open green space area and try to move retention and boat parking or... or, or other parking to the sides or somewhere else so that kids weren't running around where cars were parked and jumping and playing on boat trailers and all that kind of stuff. So I think that, that Dale and Drew up there have some potential ideas. So I just think we need to pull it and let them bring us a couple of potential concept plans.
I, I would agree with that, but I would also say that I, we need to stick to the eight courts when we're thinking about this. Because there's no use of putting in courts, a number of courts where we can't, we can't have tournaments. We have tournaments, we can kick into some of Casey Walls money and the Tourist Development Council money and, and help us to promote this thing. But we need to go with that eight courts so that we can have that opportunity to do that.
Yeah, I agree. Those are my thoughts exactly. Okay. You want to make a motion or?
You're much better at that. I'll second.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we instruct staff to withdraw our current application and explore other options for the, for potential use of the facility and instruct staff to educate the RPAC committee on what our plans are in the upcoming short-term future. So I, and, and in support of my motion, I say I think we need to tell them now that that's what our intentions are and that we think it's a better utilization of RPAC funds. And again, I understand that they're, they're not going to commit to us, but I would have them thinking that yes, we want to better utilize the funds that the county puts in place for that kind of deal.
And I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any further comments from the podium? From the audience? Bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sap?
Yes.
Okay, and then last on the agenda, sorry about that.
Mr. Mayor, does council have any further specific instruction to me that you'd like to, you'd like me to work on as far as?
You in regards to the park?
Yes.
I mean, let me just state what I perceive you're going to do, Phil, and others can, I think we have decided we're going to nix the big parking lot. What, if, if you're in the pavilions and you're staring at the lake, we're going to nix the big parking lot to the left. We're, we're not going to have two paved driveways between the pavilions and, and the lake. We might have one that comes around. I think per Mr. Polston and Drew, whose name I now, last name I forget, but we may have to put in one more handicap spot just because that's what code is going to require us to do for the restrooms. And then I think there's going to be kind of an access road that may go kind of by where the playground area is. It goes around and there may be parking that sits on the far side of the pickleball courts. There may be a loop there. The beauty of that parking is it's, you know, it can get utilized for pickleball, it can get utilized for boat parking, it can get utilized for ballgames. I mean, I think we, what we want to do is if we're doing paved driveways with primarily grass parking is have it be multi-purpose parking and access that it can service whatever is happening at that complex from 4th of July fireworks to ballgames to pickleball to people enjoying the boat ramp in the park. So, and I think, I think Mr. Sap made this point, you know, the more pervious or semi-pervious surface we leave in place, then less retention will need to build into the thing. Because building the retention is, we all know, is kind of a silly waste of time and resources that they dig a 10-inch deep deal that never holds any water, you know? So it's just, I, I understand they got to do it, they got to sell it to the district, but it's just, it's a waste of space and resources. That's my perception of what, what we're going to ask them to do for us.
Okay.
Does that include moving forward on the pickleball?
Yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah. I mean, Charlie, you're comfortable with that spot where it's shown, where it's showing on that map, right? I mean, that's kind of, I think that's what the kind of general idea is right there now.
Harry, we, we looked at there, is that an issue with you? You'd...
No, that's good. The only issue I see there is when you hold tournaments, it's a bathroom, I think that they're turned around. This is one small bathroom.
They could open up the ballpark bathrooms further down, which for a lot of people, I mean, it's all the same park.
Yeah. But at least there's something there.
Right.
And then you've got next door, you got the pavilion. If people wanted to get shade next door, they can just walk over there.
Is this plan in general, I mean, this is kind of like a napkin quickie plan for Polston, but is this, in general, look okay or?
Is there, is there any infrastructure in the way there?
We have a curving sheet.
Oh, that's, that can be moved. I, I just, anything big, anything major? So that's...
Where, where's the individual map of the courts, the, the one that was...
The map of the courts?
Yeah, the, did you have a blow up of those, of the layout?
Yeah, that's, it's down a little ways.
This was the one I was thinking about with a little bit, from, from talking to people, that it was recommended.
That's, that's almost identical to Sun and Lakes.
Yeah, you want that thing in the middle apparently for people to sit and to have stuff and benches and all that kind of...
Now, you really, yeah, well, you just need a, a, not wide enough for tents. If you get it too big in there and people actually do put tents in there, it becomes a hazard trying to go through to courts and stuff. And it, it, it doesn't need to be...
That's a better look there.
Probably six or, probably eight feet wide is more than enough, whatever Sun and Lakes is, but...
Charlie, do you think it like bleachers?
No, no. Most people would watch on the outside through the, through the nets or...
This is a lot more than eight courts, but, and, and...
And these are spread out further apart, Phil, and you can, you can reduce that space. The footprints that they have at Sun and Lakes is very functional. And then they just run a net. There's four courts on one side, then there's a chained off lower chain where you can watch the matches from inside, and then the taller fence to keep the balls in. And then they just have, in between, they've got just some real light netting to keep the balls from two courts going on to the far two courts on either side. And that's all it is, just two nets in between there. This is, that's a lot of space in between them. You can tighten it up. And whatever the specifications are, Sun and Lakes, that would be optimal. And I think you'd be minimizing it to a perfect size without building it too big, but still be functional for what we're trying to do.
Okay.
Okay.
Because I've seen some that, you know, that are, that's all they play pretty much is tournaments. And they're a lot wider like that just to give people more room.
Are the same rules going to apply there that apply to the other sports down there in the future?
Well, that's what, that's what we were discussing earlier. We probably...
Somebody said the user fees, the blue lights, if an individual goes down there and just pays for their kids to play, those include lights. The lights are $28 an hour. I don't know how to put your one or two there. If you include the lights for this, and during the long day, include the football...
What lights are we talking about, Harry? The baseball field's lights, the $28 an hour? Those aren't all LED and they're a lot more...
Yeah, they're expensive.
Yeah, they're not, they're not all LED like these would be. These would be a lot more efficient.
Yeah.
But yes, to your, to your question, you, and there's several ways you can do it. Sun and Lakes, when you pay your user fees, you've got a ID with a badge and you can put up, and when your thing expires, you can't access it anymore if you wanted to do that. But I...
The reason why some of them are getting away with a little, a lot cheaper, a lot of them convert, or Sebring...
They're, they're converting tennis courts.
Tennis courts that...
You've already got the base there. Alls you have to do is just, it's the same surface, resurface it, re-stripe it and put the new poles in. So it's a lot cheaper for them to do that from...
How about if you and Phil get together over the next month and bring it back to us? At the next meeting, because we're not getting anywhere here.
As quick as Polston can work.
Yeah, we're just talking in circles.
Yeah, yeah, as quick as Polston can work. I, I hope y'all are okay with me using Charlie as the main liaison and advisor on pickleball court.
He would be the one, yes.
What y'all envisioned down there, so.
Here's our pickleball expert.
I don't know about all that, but...
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of different designs and, and I'd like to come up with one that...
Yeah, I'd be glad to sit down with you.
All right.
Put that court in there, so.
Okay, well, let's, let's move it on. All right. Chamber of Commerce? Yep. Mr. Mayor, this, this is on the agenda. I, I can't pass emails back and forth between council members. Councilman, member Hayes had a concern, and I agree that, you know, when you look at the farmer's market and what we made them do, this one here didn't take the same initial path. So, I, any, anytime a council member asks for something to be on the agenda, it's on the agenda, so.
I would like to comment before we get started, though, that the request here is for a one-time deal. It happens a couple of times a year. The request for the farmer's market was for 26 straight weeks, which is a completely different request. I don't have a problem with the way this has been done in the past with the way you've been doing it. I think it's fine.
With the road closures?
With the road closures, with one here, one there. But the request for half a year, to me, was too big of an ask.
Yeah, well, that's...
I, I understand, and I, I understand that they're not the same thing, but they're the same concept. And I think that if I was sitting there just paging through the Chamber of Commerce newsletter and all of a sudden I see this, oh, we're going to close the road for, you know, three hours during this day, well, really? I don't recall that coming up here. So my real question is, first of all, did I, was I sleeping? Or did it come up here? Because it's, you know, a possibility, but, but him over here, probably not. But did I miss it when it came? At what point do we say, well, we don't really need to bring this to council, it's just three hours on one day? And who makes that decision? Is it the chief of police? Is it the chamber? Is it Mr. Williams? Who, who makes that decision if it doesn't come to council? So that's why I'm bringing this here, is I'd like to have some, I, I'm not good at gray. This is gray to me. I would like some black and white. So?
You're talking about who makes the decisions?
Well, exactly. I mean, here, Ms. Bush is here, she's ready to talk to us about what's going on here. I don't have any objection at all to closing the street. That's not my point. My point is, who gave the, who gave the permission to close the street? And don't we have a similar concern? Because I understand that our exposure is not the same on a three-hour event versus an event that's going to come every single Saturday for six months out of the year. I get that. But we still have exposure when we close the street, when we change traffic patterns, when we move people around. And, and in, in actuality, the farmer's market is more consistent. This just pops up, oh, hello, oh, gee, we can't go down there today, okay? So I would like clarity as to at what level does a function have to come to the board? At what level does a function have to have the liability insurance and the signage and the barricades and the police protection and everything that we are requesting of the farmer's market? At what level do we do that? Is this, is this, okay, this is once a year. Well, what if it turns out to be something that's once a month? Or, I mean, where are the parameters?
And, and that was kind of what I put in the agenda package, that this is a new council in a way. And if you guys have instructions on how you want me to approve things or not approve things, or, I mean, there, there are probably about 15 forums in this town, including the building here and different aspects of it. The sports arenas, the parks, the, the, the streets. And every one of them have different things, you know, some want alcohol, some don't want alcohol, some want to, you know, come in here and, and...
But you're talking about coming in this building. You're talking about coming in this building, right?
Yeah.
I'm not talking about...
No, everywhere.
I see, I see that, I see the events as, as a, about 30 people a month coming to us for different perspectives of the building. And if the council wants to see every one of them, let's schedule a late meeting and I'll bring them all, but I mean...
That's not my point. But are you making those decisions? Are you making those decisions?
I would not have made the, the decision on this one here because it didn't take the same path. And thi, this is something new that they've never done, okay? And it did, it did not take the same path. Now, having said that, it did take the same path that some past road closures have taken. But, you know, as many events as they are coming in, it, it's hard to be rigid and just say, okay, no, this is, this is, and I, I am pretty rigid. But I mean, it's hard to be rigid and say it's going to be done this way. This one here apparently went to Chief Fensler first and, and he approved it.
So who else can approve a street closure?
That's not what I would, I mean, the, the other thing went through, when I say the other thing, I'm talking about the...
Farmer's market.
Farmer's market.
No, not the farmer's market. The, what's the, the high school thing, the high school parade. Okay? That came to me in the form of the facility use request form. That facility use request form sort of triggers everything. And I passed it on to Chief Fensler and said, here, take care of it. This one here, he sent me an email saying that the thing was going up. I thought he was, I thought it was the Christmas parade. I, I looked at it and, okay, December thing, I thought it was the Christmas parade. And he, but he, he didn't put an attachment to it. So it really didn't pay no mind. You know, I thought it was a, you know, but, because had they filled out a facility request form, I would have given it back to him anyway so he can take care of it.
So, so let me just attempt to get this in my head. Who has the authority to close a street?
Town council has given that to...
That's one. Who else?
Lee was about to answer. You've given that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Town, town council, I thought, had given me that discretion and, and the discretion on the building.
Okay.
And, and the, the engineers, the process, the way it works is Chief Fensler puts in a, a road closure request to the engineer. And then it's a very short, simple form and, and if it's okay with us, it's okay with them. And then they close, they close the road.
Okay.
Or not, they don't close it, we close it with their permission.
Okay.
They don't want road close, road closures without them knowing about it.
Sure, of course.
Does that make sense?
So the answer is you make the decision on road closures based on the paperwork that you receive from Chief Fensler or Gator or whomever it involves, right? Am I, have I got that right? Okay.
And if it's an inordinate, when I say an unusual thing, this one here never got to me early on. I mean, it, it, in the future, it will, but okay? If it's an, if it's an unusual thing like boat rowing down at the park, something unusual, I'm going to bring that to council and everything to make sure you guys are okay with.
Okay.
I mean, if it's, if it's a, if it's sometimes a no-brainer, and sometimes I may make decisions that I put, I let him put a food truck out there that made Ray mad, you know, on Main Street. I mean, I mean, if it's, if it's something that upsets the apple cart, I'm not trying to, you know, but somebody has to make a decision and, you know, or else you guys would be very busy and these council...
Oh, I, I understand. And I don't have a problem with that. I'm just trying to get it in my head, okay? I'm a rookie, trying to get it in my head. And I'm trying to understand what is the threshold?
Well, a lot of times I'm trying to get it together in my head, okay? Because, you know, it come, this one here sort of was an unusual situation. Ray, Ray will tell you, and of course, some of the others are gone now, that he particularly doesn't want to know about all the small little details. A lot of the stuff that can be taken care of, council went ahead and gave Phil the ability to go ahead and take care of it. So it'll be him and, between him and...
ability to go ahead and take care of it, so be him and, between him and Chief Fensler, they, uh, they did that.
Okay.
And like Phil said, if it's something that's out of the ordinary, like the farmer's market.
Okay.
We're not gonna go ahead and approve that without it coming before council.
Okay.
Because it was so much more than what we normally would allow.
Okay.
You know, so, that's, that's, that's how it transpired, I think.
So, the threshold.
She submitted, you probably submitted it to Chief Williams, or to.
Well, she's, she's, she submitted it today. I asked her to, to, to submit the application, the facility use, as a matter of fact, I've already signed, signed off on it, the only thing that can change that would be council to say, no, we don't wanna do it, but I'm, I, I would've approved it, you know, with, with, uh, you know, James, James, you know, going ahead with it, I would've probably just sent it over to him and said, here, you know, do, do what you gotta do with closing the street, he knows how to close streets.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, you know, for the road closures, I would've liked, different things and everything, I just got practices that I do, and, and we try to be consistent, sometimes Eva and I screw it up, I mean, we've, we've, we've wondered, we've had conversations before anything in, inside the building, uh, which, we try to be consistent and put it on a calendar, uh, the Lake Center, Government Center reservations, that comes out and publishes in the public, uh, in those calendars, we try, try to be consistent and actually put the, and, and most of that was just so as council could, uh, if somebody rode by, because I know, uh, Councilman Royce has rode by and said, what are they doing at Devane Park? And I want y'all to be able to just look on a phone someplace and see what's going on at the park, or what's going on at the building, and also the citizens and everything like that, if they wanna use Devane Park, or if they wanna use, they can look and find out a day that it's free, you know, a day, a day that it's open and free. So, in, in answer to your question, it's kind of all over the board, there's no, it, it just depends on the situation.
So the threshold is that gray area that I'm not comfortable with?
Big, big time, big time.
Uh-huh.
You know, and if you wanna come up with a different set of scenarios, you know, we can have the council look at it and decide how you wanna do it, but this has worked pretty well for us in the past.
I'm sure that it has, but I, but I also understand that I'm, I'm of, I'm of the mindset that if we have a paperwork process, then it should be continued for every organization that comes up, unless we say, and we could say, that the chamber is exempt from that.
Yeah.
Okay, we could do that, but I don't think we have yet, okay? And so, if every event has to go through, and I don't think every event has to come before the full council, I'm not interested in a 9:00 p.m. meeting or anything like that, and I'm not interested in taking any power away from Mr. Williams or Chief Fensler in the opportunity to close roads when you need to do that. I'm just saying that there should be consistency. This is not a good old boys' network, there's a girl here now, and it's not gonna go that way, okay?
But this, this one, had it started out, it would've been consistent.
Yeah.
You know, if the, you know, this is the first time I've ever done this with the street.
Okay.
So, it, it would've been, it would've been consistent. Now, having said, talked about consistency a little bit, it's, it's, it's council's turn to be inconsistent and waive the fees for them, if they, because.
Well, we have the opportunity to do that.
Well, if I might, Mr. Mayor, a couple of things, and I, I understand Ms. Hayes's point. Ultimately, our charter grants, I believe, all that authority to the mayor.
Right.
And our form of government, I mean, Phil's authority is directly because the mayor has granted Phil some latitude to make decisions, but ultimately, due to our charter, the mayor can hire and fire everybody, the mayor makes every single decision, so, I mean, ultimately, it, it goes to the mayor. And, and just so Ms. Bush can get going.
I'm good.
I would separate these issues in the sense that if we wanna approve for the chamber doing this event, and I understand your point is that we probably need to have a more well-defined policy that says, okay, what things can the police chief, the administrator, whoever sign off on, and which things come for consideration, and I think that's just gonna take some policy creation, and I would imagine, I perceive, that we would, if they're closing the street, we are gonna probably require the same level of barricades and the same level of insurance, and I, I, I perceive the chamber has the insurance, because I know they have it for other events, or maybe we need to, to your point, I don't know who gives the Lake Placid High School the authority to close down streets, or the chamber to have the Christmas parade, or whoever's in charge of the Christmas parade, but I guess there's just things that have been done for years, and we know it's a hard time, and hard in a small town to let a few signs stay out on the grass and other ones get picked up, that's the nature of being in a small town, but if we need to approve it, I mean, I'm, I'll, uh, I will make a motion that we approve the chamber's request to, to try to close Main on the evening of December 16th, per, um, agreement with, per the written agreement with the town, to the satisfaction of the town administrator, and then we can talk about the overall policy thing, if you'd like.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, uh, and waive the fees? Because if you're gonna be consistent, you have to say, well, we're charging the farmer's market for having a police officer there, and I, we're gonna have a police officer there, we need, anytime the road is closed, we really need a police officer, especially if we're gonna have 1,000, 2,000 people in the road.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but that's up to council whether you wanna waive this.
I don't have a problem with that.
I'll second your motion, so we can discuss it.
Okay.
Farmer's Market's a private event, this is a community event.
So.
Proceed as a different function, so I have no problem waiving the fees on this.
All right, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that, too, I'm just, I'm just trying to get clarity, okay, this is, this is not a private event, good, this is a chamber event, good, I'm good with waiving the fees, because it's a chamber event, garbage pickup, you know, I, it's all good, but we've got the, the same boxes that we have to check off, and yes, we approved this, no, we didn't approve this, okay?
Okay. Would you?
Councilman Hayes, I learned my lesson with the mom's drama, I try to be.
Would you, would you waive the fees?
Yes.
Is that part of your motion?
Yes, I, the waiver, the waiving the fees is incumbent upon my motion, if it's okay with the second.
And you do the second.
And I'll, and I'll agree with the second as well.
No second, yeah, the second, okay.
Yep.
All right.
And if we can kinda get the chambers deal out of the way, then it allows us to have a more general conversation.
Next, next time, do things the right way.
I'll fill out all the paperwork on time, thank you very much, we appreciate you. We're looking forward to seeing all of you on the 16th.
We gotta vote, don't we?
I know. Any other comments from the podium?
Do we have a second?
Hold on, we got a motion and a second.
Councilman Hayes.
Oh, okay, she did second, I didn't hear.
Any other comments from the podium? Any from the audience? All right, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Bush.
Okay?
Thank you.
I think that was all that was on the agenda.
But, Mr. Mayor, if we might, to Ms. Hayes's point, and I don't know, Ms. Hayes, how you wanna handle it, if whether or not, you know, you wanna attempt to kinda come up with some policy language, or if you want us to spend another five minutes now, but I, I understand your point, that, that where, how, where does a gray line need to become more, a black line, you know, more durable?
Well, I think in this case, if she would've got the form right away and filled it out and submitted it, there probably wouldn't have been a problem.
Right.
But, I think it was just the way that it, it, it came in, because she just signed the papers today, as we're on this.
I'm visiting her.
Yeah.
She probably didn't know.
She didn't know she needed to, because she got an okay by the chief, you know, so.
She's not one that would, would do this at the last minute, nor is Chief Fensler. They didn't know they had to go through that process. And, and I agree, Ray, we gotta figure out, and I would be happy to work on it, as to, at what point do we do that?
Probably.
And I think to cover all of us, we all, at all of these events, should have at least the paperwork on file, because if something happens.
Of course.
At least we have the paperwork on file, and at what level, um, the, the town administrator or the chief of police can approve, or above this level, it has to come to council, then, then I can address, uh, Mr. Sapp's point and everything, that we obviously, that the farmer's market is a much bigger deal than this is, but the point remains, I think we still have to have a consistent order.
So, I think a way to start is we say that we, that we're going to grant the authority to either the chief or the administrator, or who, or the mayor's designee, however you wanna do it, for one-day not-for, I mean, one-day not-for-profit events, we allow them to make that determination.
Yep.
We're gonna require, we're gonna require the insurance, or we're gonna require the, the barricades.
And the police presence.
But, but, but maybe we're even gonna waive the fees for one-day, not-for-profit community events. We then list out two or three other very specific dates, the country fair, the Caladium Festival, I mean.
Christmas parade.
The Christmas parade, which will be a one-day thing, but, but those, I mean, I think those are the only multi-day events that I can think of, and then, if, if we wanna play a little harder ball, we, we say, any other events, or certainly any events that are being put on by for-profit entities, need to fill out an application in a timely manner and come to council, and then we're, and that way, we hit the consistency.
Yeah, we, we need the paperwork, I, I think we need the paperwork on all of these. We don't have to see it all, but it has to be, uh, in, in our, in our files, so that if something does happen, we know who to go back to.
And, and to.
And don't forget the police presence on these things. When you close a street, you need a police presence.
And, and to Phil's point, I, I wasn't really upset that the food truck was parked on North Main, I just saw it parked there, and I just wanted to make sure that someone had actually asked, and Phil said yes, I gave him permission for whatever, so, I don't care, I'm actually a big food truck performer, I just wanna make sure people weren't just doing stuff and without asking, which I think would be your exact point.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything from our department heads?
Alan Kiefer here, I just had a quick, um, topic to bring up for an agenda item for next month, I'm gonna be requesting a decision be made on residential garbage cans, uh, in, in reference to people that want second, uh, some people want three and four extra residential cans, and I need to know which direction to go, if it's going to be a one-time fee, in which case they would own the can and could potentially take it with them, or if it's gonna be a recurring cost annually. This is, I, I just wanted to give everyone a heads up, uh, give you time to think about it.
Can I ask a question? I mean, currently, you've issued all of us one can.
Correct.
The can belongs to the town of Lake Placid, we're just the user of said can?
Yes.
Okay.
Each one is just issued to the residents, not the individual living there.
So, I, I mean, I would suggest that there be a fee to be issued a second can, we're still, we're still, it's still, the can still belongs to the town of Lake Placid, you, you've absorbed a cost of a can and a delivery fee, and so if I want a second can, you ought to say, fine, Mr. and Mrs. Smith, you can have a second can, there's a one-time fee of 75 bucks, 80 bucks, whatever the fee is, and, but the can still belongs to the town, I don't get to take it with me, but you've, I think the bigger question I know you were thinking about earlier is, now, now that Mr. and Mrs. Smith own a second can, are you gonna charge me an additional garbage fee because theoretically I'm putting more stuff in the truck?
Correct.
Is that gonna be part of your request as well?
Yeah, is it generating more than a typical residence, uh, because there, there are some people that have asked for three and four cans because they have rental properties, and they generate a lot more garbage, and basically, four of those cans equals a two-yard dumpster, so that seems like an excessive amount to only charge for one time.
So is the, if I might, Mr. Mayor, so the rental properties, we, are we not charging them per dwelling unit?
It's not exactly a rental property, it's, it's a personally-owned residence that they are using as an Airbnb.
Oh, okay.
There should be an ad fee incurred with the extra can, buying the cans, one issue, but you're hauling more trash and you have to take it to the Caladium, or Okeechobee, you're gonna have to charge more, we're gonna have to charge more for each can.
I tell you what you're gonna hear, I've got a big can, I have one bag of garbage every, twice a week, my neighbor's got four cans, they're all full, and he's paying the same price as me.
I, I understand.
I don't think so.
Yeah, yeah.
I, we have to come up with a, we have to come up with a, a, a package, so to speak, how much we charge for two, how much we charge for three, how much we charge.
I think it needs to be a recurring charge, because they are putting more in there, we are already double the pickup of the county, as it is now, we're picking up twice a week versus the counties picking up once, and we've got really big cans, if you're filling them up, that's fine, I'd rather have you doing that, but you're gonna have to pay for it.
I mean.
I can't see how we could, we could possibly add another can without adding some sort of a cost to it as well.
Now, I don't know if it should be the same rate, because it may not be used all the time, that's something we have to come up with, and the, the truck is gonna be there whether it's one can or two cans going by, so that's something that we, we need to decide, or.
But you still have to take it to the landfill.
Or Alan has to recommend what, what you think, you know?
But if somebody's requested four cans, they've, they've got a lot of garbage.
They, they, they need to be paying.
Yeah.
And you still have to take it to the landfill.
Yeah, yeah, the tipping charges, we're, we're paying for that.
Yeah.
I, I don't disagree with y'all, I'm, I mean, obviously, I'll go back, and the reason maybe I voted against what y'all approved was, I always liked the fact that we were picking everything up, and I will say, the town's doing a pretty good job, if it's not in the can, they're not picking it up, and so, you know, when I put stuff out and it isn't in the can, they don't pick it up, so I have to deal with it in other ways, so I know that from time to time, I, I, I might only need a second, personally, might only need a second can, you know, two or three times a year, you know, so, I'm still back to where we, what we used to do is if we put out other bags or boxes, the town picked them up, and that was part of the service, and they don't do that anymore, so.
Well, and, and to your point, it wasn't abused in certain areas, in some areas, it's more frequently done that way, and then it becomes, it, it just becomes a mess issue and everything, and then there's, for all the reasons we've identified, you know, with labor issues and everything, picking up, whatever.
This'll give you a month to try to.
Come back with some recommendations.
Come back to us.
And I'm like you, Ray, the town should still own them.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, what I was talking about earlier was the can itself, now, if the idea is, what are we, I apologize, are we at 220, or where are we at? What are we, what's our annual fee?
I believe it's 220.
So, I would, to the mayor's point, maybe if you have a second can, then your fee, and I'm making it up, and I'm not saying, but, then your fee is $300 a month, and if you have three can, I mean, no, it's, I don't know that it needs to be two, three, four times 220, but there should be a graduated fee.
Right.
And, and then that would also probably, certainly gonna dissuade me, I'd say, well, we'll just get one can, and.
Instead of three or four?
Yeah, well, we'll fit it all in there, and.
Because Alan's exactly right, if there isn't any cost, and it's just the cost of a, one-time cost of a can, here we are, we're defeating the whole purpose, because then everyone's gonna be, you know, getting all these extra.
Can, yeah.
Okay.
Okay?
Good.
I was just gonna show Judy what kind of map we'd be looking for for the ruling.
Oh, yeah, no, she left, though, okay.
Good.
Yeah.
Sorry.
All right, Joe.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to give a council a quick update on the Lake Placid Camp and Conference Center project, uh, as everybody knows, there's three grants for that, the large SRF that was 1.8, there's a $570,000 grant, and another $600,000 grant. What has happened during our modeling for the big septic-to-sewer project, we've discovered that the two lift stations that they were going to improve to start with now need to get bumped up again, so, what that means, I think I'm gonna have to separate those two lift station projects and pull it out of the Camp and Conference Center's force main. Um, I don't know that I need any decisions from you guys, I just wanna let you know, I think, how we're gonna proceed, that'll allow us to go ahead and get the force main[1774.41] That'll allow us to go ahead and get the force main built, and then those other two grants, we can use for the two lift station upgrades.
No, you can put, you can put those in anytime.
Say, sir?
You can pretty much put them in when you want to.
Yeah, it, the Camp and Conference Center should be able to hook up, and the two lift stations will operate with not a whole lot of capacity left. So they will work, but we're, we're going to go ahead and, and get the two lift stations done. Probably it'll go in after the force main. So I'm, I'm doing that to try to keep this project moving along and not hold it up, but we're having to upgrade those other two a little bit over and above what the Camp and Conference Center was going to have to do. So that's my game plan moving forward. I just wanted to let you guys know.
So with that, Joe, whenever we agreed to this $40 million grant, the five-year window started when everyone said yes, is that right? That's like 14 or 18 months ago? It's been a while back?
Yeah, I don't think, it wasn't, yes, it was a five-year window, but we have to have everything spent by the end of '26, and they really want us wrapping up middle of '26.
So the clock is ticking fast. Are you comfortable that we can meet all those target dates?
We're going as fast as we can. The schedule looks like we can, but as you know, things come up. I think the hardest part with the septic-to-sewer project is going to be actually getting all the individual homes hooked in. I think we'll have the wastewater plant done on time, and all the force mains should go in according to schedule, but it's, we've gone and met with Martin County. That was another thing I wanted to tell you guys. Getting off subject this Thursday at 2:00. As long as we avoid sunshine violations, I can schedule you, but the pump manufacturers coming in with a demo trailer at, at, with the units we're looking at. So if anybody's interested and wants to ask questions, see what we're looking at, you can come do that. But that being said-
I would like to see that, yes. And I, I missed the opportunity to see the dewatering system that was set up for the sludge. I, I wanted to go to that, too, and it happened without my knowledge. Please add me to the list of that. I, I need to see that.
Okay.
Is it Wednesday or Thursday?
It's Wednesday.
Okay, you just said Thursday. That's why I just, okay, I, I had it on, it's Wednesday at 2:00. Okay.
Yes, my, my brain's fried. Wednesday at 2:00, excuse me.
Good, thank you. And where will that be? Would that, will that be at the plant?
No, he's going to come here. He'll be at Town Hall. I said all that to say that we've gone and met with Martin County and this pump package, I've gotten a little better idea of how those installs go. I think we're going to have to separate that out as well, so we'll have contractors come in and do the right-of-way work, putting the force main in, and then we'll probably have separate contracts for the electricians and the plumbers to do the individual home installs. That being said, I think to get 1,500 of those in, that will probably be the challenge, is the individual connections. I think the rest of it, I feel pretty comfortable we can have done on time.
So what happens if you get past 2026 and this isn't done? Do they cut off the $40 million? Is that where you're spent? Can we continue to operate? Why have a deadline on it?
It, I believe it was tied to some of those federal relief funds, and they, there is no extensions on that. So whatever we, we manage to spend by then is all we can spend.
So we just stop at that date, wherever we are? It's a lost opportunity if we don't get that far into it.
That's my understanding. So we're, I'm trying to get this going as fast as we can, and, and we're moving as expediently as we can.
And right now, the septic, the sewer plant is being designed. That contract for design has been let, and the con, have the contracts for design of the collection system has been let?
Yes, they are currently surveying all that. So it, it's in the design phase now, and they've done, you know, they are surveying now.
And the design phase should end 10 months from now on the sewer plant, and probably about the same on the lines, and you will see us rush to bid. So that will be, this is November, probably about November of '23, so that gives us all of '24, all of '25, half of '26 to construct, which should be plenty of, construction for the plant should take a year, for the lines should take a year as well, Joe?
Yes.
Or less, maybe, because he's run, he, Joe's putting the lines out to different companies, so you won't have to have one doing one line at a time. You'll have four doing four lines.
Yep, and-
And, so that should give, and then you'll have yet another year to do the hookup, or a year and a half, actually.
Right.
Fair summary?
Yes, and, and what, what we can do is we can go ahead and start on installing the force mains, even though we can't turn that on until the plant is ready. So my, my plan is to, and that's why it also makes sense to separate them. Like, we can get the force mains going and, and in the road right-of-way as soon as possible, and they're there, ready to go, and then as soon as the plant comes online, we can have the individual homes start hooking up, so that we're actually sending flows to the new plant. So it's, that'll be the timing of, you know, 1,500 for some of our local guys to get all those in. That's a lot. So I'm probably going to have to have multiple contractors to, to do the actual individual home installations. We also don't know exactly how many of those we can fund. After meeting with Martin County, I was hopeful his actual construction numbers are quite a bit different than what we saw, so I, I have some hope that maybe there's some monies left over that could be used to fund the connections. You know, if everybody remembers as it stood right now, with the estimates we got back, we basically had the funds just to get the force main out in the right-of-way and fund not many connections. The numbers he has, all directional drilled, looks like we could fund probably a majority of the connections. That being said, we don't know any of that yet, and also council hasn't, doesn't really have enough information to make hard decisions on that yet either. So that's why we're trying to hurry up and rush. If we get the wastewater plant and the force mains bid, we'll know about how much money we've got left over to work on the connections.
So we will be constructing lines and plants during the same 12-month period?
I'm, I'm hoping, yes, that's my plan.
That's the objective, at least.
Yes.
And that would include the one in Lake Placid that's the gravity system? Or are you going to be able to bid that out sooner since it's designed?
That one will be a little bit touchy on timing, so that would probably be the only one that might get put back a little, because once that one connects, they're all on. So I, I can't, that one's a little bit harder. That, that may be the one project, since it's a gravity project, everybody remember, I'm going to have to time that one right, so that it can come online with the new plant. So it might start a little bit after the others.
Are we going out to Placid Lakes?
Yes, sir.
What side of the road?
They're designing that now, so-
I was going to say, if we're going to do that, if we're going to have multi-path.
Yeah, well, and that's, that's part of why we're getting that easement, so we can run those utilities.
Maybe doing both on the same side of the road.
Well, he's talking about two different, you're talking about, Joe's talking about inner, West Interlake, we have the 30-foot path. Joe's, you, I think, are talking about going all the way out catfish.
Well, yeah, well, Interlake, too.
I'd love to do that next, and if the council has appetite for that, and we don't have to shoot Joe over it, his budget, that was a joke, please. You know, we can, keep discussing that with the smokes, if you'd like.
He has a half million dollars to spend.
More if you give us the ARPA money.
So DEP pretty much insisted that the houses be hooked up when this thing is done. If we run out of money and they stop us at five years, there's no way to enforce that. What, what do you think happens then?
Well, if, if you remember, we have a direction from DEP explicitly stating, like, the, the CDBG grants, we have to have a certain amount of absolute hookups. Well, DEP is happy with us getting the lines in the road, so that in the future, they can hook up. So with this particular grant, they were okay with our game plan of getting the lines in the road and not having a whole lot of funds for the individual hookups.
I'm good with that as well, because over time, they will have to hook up when their existing systems fails, and, and over time, it'll happen anyway, which will be our goal.
Be forced to.
Yeah, I just didn't want to get in the crack at five years with the DEP and have a problem that we can't get ourselves out of by running out of time on this thing.
Yeah, Bert, it took us a long time to get there, but we, we have that direction from them, and they're okay with it.
I thought initially that they were requiring us to hook up, and frankly, Greg and I talked a lot, and we took different points of view on that. And DEP came down with Greg, saying, we do not have to hook up. We have to get lines in with that money. There was then discussion about, gee, get that spent, and talk to us again about more money.
Yeah.
And if we get into a line extension where we need another half a million or a million, my understanding is we can go back to them. I suspect in that year, you will see some of the communities may not spend all their money. That happens more often than not. So I think we're on track.
We might be one of those not spending all of our money.
Well, we could.
Running out of time, it may happen here, too.
Yeah, well, you, we chew each other up. If you haven't seen two staff members fight, you put Bert and Joe in the same room and ask them a question, we'll take opposite points of view. But we end up kind of in the same place most of the time, with friendships intact.
Right. So I, there's some ideas also, like, the E1 rep will be here Wednesday at 2:00, so just be aware, it's a sunshine, ask him all the questions you want, and there'll be no decisions made, but if, I think that's probably the direction we may, we're exploring, and if something comes of that, you'll probably have a contract or something we'll look at later. So there will be a decision to be made later.
All right, let's talk about sunshine and that meeting. I didn't realize we had so many council members, and if you're, if more than two go, and that's, that includes the mayor, please don't get in front of each other and start asking a bunch of questions. Pull them off to the side, ask their questions.
I can make different time intervals for y'all to meet, like, just let me know who wants to come, and I'll, 2:45, or 3:00, however y'all want to do that, so you each get some time with them, if you'd like.
You would make the town attorney feel a lot better if you would stagger them out, and there's no chance of talking to each other.
My plan on being there, too.
Okay.
Maybe we could hear a general synopsis from the group and keep our mouths shut, and then have discussions afterwards separately.
You can do that.
If I could go hide around the corner and then go back.
I just wanted to, since I'm talking about it in a public meeting, y'all just need to be aware that it's, that we're there to ask, observe, ask him questions, but there won't be any decisions made. It's also kind of an engineering decision, so with these specific pumps, there's some different engineering, we can actually use some smaller pipes, and I think there'll be a little bit of an economy of scale there. So they're, they're not the same as our normal grinder pumps we've been using. They're completely different pump design, so it's actually kind of exciting. They, they don't have any floats, which is what we struggle with. It's, it's quite different, so there's some pluses and minuses we can discuss offline, and I'll probably talk to you guys individually, ask me the questions. But I just wanted to get a demo, show them the way we're headed, because we, we're, we're actually at the point in design, we, I need to spec these pump packages, and we got to make a decision on what we want to do, so all the engineers can spec the same thing. And this is an option that seems a lot of folks are using, so I'm trying to get him here as soon as possible, and hopefully start negotiating with them.
Okay. Anything on Taco Bell?
They have submitted their first application. Staff reviewed it to code, and there's, you know, quite a few issues, and last we've heard they're working on that. So I, they haven't resubmitted the, the revised plans yet.
Okay. All right. All right, anything else from any of the department heads? Okay, Ms. Hayes?
Where are we with the farmer's market and closing that road?
I'll let Phil talk about it, but right now, it's in their court.
Okay.
Farmer's market.
Where are we with the farmer's market and the closing of that road?
I sent out an email to everybody, kind of briefing everybody, but, but nevertheless, and, and that email included the emails that I'll base this conversation on.
I read the email.
And, and basically, it's in their ballpark. I mean, they, they, they have, they set up, we set up one meeting, apparently they didn't get the email, and so I sent out something else, and they said they didn't see the email until they saw that one, and they couldn't make it. And then we, we rescheduled, and they canceled that meeting, and they have not rescheduled it. That was, I think, about 10 days ago.
Okay. So we're still waiting on them to come up with the insurance and to, and to do the signage or signage?
Well, they totally have to sign the agreement.
They have signed the agreement, okay.
Yeah, I mean, they, they, they have provided us insurance papers.
Okay.
Legal has reviewed it and said they're, they're, we are covered, you know, with their papers. And that was my two main requirements, was that those two things. Now, as I understand, maybe they want to talk about the, the, how many police officers or something along that line, and of course, that would be just one, but-
And how about the barricades or signage or something? Do we have to, you said something about ordering that, and it takes three weeks or something of that effect?
Well, they, they were talking about something they could get cheaper, maybe. The town buys the signs, and Alan has, has a company that he talked about that we might get, and any savings that we get, we'll pass on to them.
Sure.
I mean, we're only, we're not looking to make a profit. We're looking to get the signs that we need.
Sure.
But, so they may want some of those initial blank spots on the contract to be filled in, but that being the case, I mean, you know, we, it's, the contract in, in their hands, they just have to sign it and-
Okay. Thank you.
Totally, totally in their ballpark.
I mean, people have asked me, and so I thought I'd, I'd ask.
Right. Nothing, Mr. Mayor. I, I will tell you, just as an educational point, Highlands County is looking for a new county administrator. They're going to be moving forward in that process, and we don't really play a role in it, other than if they get to some finalists, you know, there may be some opportunities to go interact with the candidates, and I would encourage you all that if you get the opportunity to do that, because if they don't hire the internal thing, then the other people are from far parts of the country. It'll be people from Wisconsin and Iowa and stuff like that. So if there are an event that you can go to a month or so from now, that I would encourage you to do, nothing's been set up yet, so let me be clear, but they are moving forward that process. They're going to make some decisions, probably in the next day or two, of narrowing it down to three or four people. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seck?
No, sir, I have nothing.
Charlie?
Nothing.
Nothing? I want to thank Alan. The, I don't know if you've noticed the new Christmas lights?
Very nice.
They look good down Interlake. We had a meeting this morning, and on Dow Hall, the, the lights that were damaged are supposed to be taken care of this week, so those lights should be lit in a few days, I hope.
Okay.
I've encouraged Alan to take the old decorations we got, and maybe running them down South Main, decorate that a little more. And also Devane Park, I'd like to see some, let us get more festive down that way. But it really, those new lights really make a big difference. And we got some, we got Thanksgiving coming up, so I wish you all the best, and have a good, safe holiday. We've got the Christmas parade. Let's, don't forget that.
Do we have a role in the Christmas parade?
Do we what?
Do we have a role in the Christmas parade, or do we just go and-
We haven't had, you know, I'm, I'm in it every year. We used to have the mayor and pretty much the whole council go, but a lot of, a lot of councilmen and councilwomen have their own parties and stuff, so that kind of went by the wayside. If, if you would like to be in it, all we have to do is, is sit it up with the chamber, and you'll have a slot.
I don't know that, I'm interested in that, but I'm just curious, just curious.
No, it's, I, I think it's important for, for people to see us. I'd like to see more of us get involved, but, you know, it's not something that I would ever-
We don't have a float that we have to ride on or anything like that?
No, no.
Okay, okay.
No, no, while we, each councilman had their own individual car at one time.
We all can ride a horse.
Yeah? Do what?
We all can ride a horse.
There you go.